Mr. Whitlock is fixing that, it's going to be recording the news section. Board chair will be back in just one moment. So, good news, we'll be able to post that and we apologize for any inconvenience. That was the one little glitch we didn't anticipate, but we'll have that fixed for the next time.
Are you talking to me, Norris?
I did not hear that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just received a Gmail saying that the recording and chat are now available, I guess that's the same confirmation you got.
I have a lot of windows open, Mr. Campbell.
Well, I'm looking at it on my tablet, because I'm bringing up the documents on my tablet too. I make them a little bigger than they are on the computer screen.
Dr. McDaris, that's the notification of the new recording for the, for part two of the meeting. That was the notification, just went out, I just started recording again.
Okay, do I need to do anything on my end?
No, sir, I've got it.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right. We were, we were still talking about the capital budget with Mr. Barker.
Uh, yes, we were, and I think I finished talking.
Okay, do you need to go over anything with lottery or fund balances?
Well, I would like to, to look at that briefly.
Before you go there, Norris, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Capital needs, in our last year's budget request, I think I made a suggestion to Norris, and I haven't pulled it up, so I don't even know exactly what it was. We put some information on there regarding the remaining needs from the master facility plan that has created, the way it was presented, has created some confusion in what our needs are. So, Norris, I'm going to ask you if you can include with the budget the, um, the remaining 24, approximately 24.3 million remaining needs identified in the master facility plan, so that that can be cleared up and clarified as to what our remaining needs are.
Uh, yes, ma'am, I can do that. I, I presented a summary document to Dr. McDaris today to see if that helped explain things a little bit, and we hadn't had a chance to talk about it yet. But, yeah, I can include, I can include all that. The, the things that are coming out this year are going to be estimates, because we haven't paid for everything yet, but, um, um, yeah, I can definitely do that, try to clear that up and have all our needs on one document.
If you could do that, I would really appreciate that, thank you very much. I'm sorry, move on, just let me get that in.
Okay, um, any other questions about the capital outlay plan, and I'll move on to the estimated lottery and fund balances sheet? I will mention one last thing on the capital outlay. I just got an email from Audrey Reneau about her hallway tile, and I, I will need to add that to it. I was waiting on the price for the generator for this year's budget before I added that to that, and I haven't gotten that yet, but just as soon as I do, I'll add that item to hallway tile for TC Henderson.
And I, I don't know whether this budget year is the year to do it, but at some point, I think we've got to take a look at the vast discrepancy between the amount of money we are putting into athletic equipment versus what we're putting into cultural arts and band. I realize athletic equipment is expensive, but if you look at the discrepancy in the funding amounts, it's, it's pretty significant.
I agree, I've been pointing that out for about three years.
Be happy to look at anything the board wants us to look at.
We need to, we need to keep in mind, uh, there's a whole lot more safety needs, and athletics is a victim of rules that are changing constantly. Head gears getting cheaper, padding doesn't get any cheaper, all athletic equipment not getting cheaper, and, uh, we got to be real careful, especially on the safety issue. Uh, I, you know, you know how I feel about this, I like to have everything equal, but you got to keep in mind, there's certain things that are dictated for athletics, that dictate for the other programs you're talking about. So, need to keep that in mind, thank you.
I think what probably, since it has been this way for a while, this is just my suggestion, and y'all can say whether you agree or not, that when we can have, or a better place to have like a budget workshop, where we can have good conversation and have people come to us that we want to answer the questions we might have. So, if it's okay, maybe we can put that off until next year. See your faces to see if you're agreeing or not.
Okay, and Toni, if you could, uh, move a little closer to the microphone, I don't know whether it's my hearing or the distance you are from the microphone, but I'm having trouble understanding. I did catch, you know, when we can have budget workshops to take a look at some of those issues.
Okay, I'll repeat myself, I was just going to say, we're going to make that kind of change, since that has been, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, I'm just saying if we're going to make that kind of change with, um, I know there's different reasons for both sides, it might be better if we wait till we can have some budget workshops and have a chance to have conversations and have people come present to us if we have questions. So, about, I was just wondering if we could delay that conversation until next budget cycle.
I would be agreeable to that.
Alice? How do you feel about that?
I forgot to, I forgot to unmute myself. I would, yes, I would be agreeable to that.
And Marty?
That's what I, we need to be doing tonight, we just have more important things tonight.
Thank you.
Fine, thank you. Uh, that will move us to, uh, Norris, you wanted to talk about the lottery balance.
Norris, are you still with us?
Sorry, I muted my microphone too. Um, so, since I was proposing to use some of the lottery funds to pay for the Piscatah Forest piping, I wanted to give you an idea of what our lottery fund balances might look like if that happened at the end of the next fiscal year. Uh, we did not project any allocation out of there for this current year, so I'm projecting a little bit shy of $559,000, uh, in lottery funds at the end of this current fiscal year. If you add a projected $248,000 in distribution for FY '21, um, and, and just as a side note, I'm, I'm hoping that by July 1st, we'll be over the worst of this, and that things will be back to normal, and thing, people will be selling things again from July 1st through the 30th, so I don't anticipate that, uh, uh, sales tax to go down any. Uh, you take out the project allocation, that would leave us at the end of next fiscal year, FY '21, uh, about $237,000 in lottery balance. As I said, I've, I've got a couple of other ideas we could, we could use to fund that project also, and I'll, write those up, uh, and send them to Dr. McDaris and let him send those on to you, but that, that would be an option right there. Uh, we do have, uh, I'm projecting at this point about $129,000 increase in fund balance in our local current expense to about $990,000 or so, and a little bit of an increase, uh, not including any projects that carry over to next year in the capital outlay for an estimated balance of about $380,000, um, or so by the end of FY '21. So, um,
Norris?
Yes, sir.
You want to speak a little bit about, uh, why that, that happens, uh, very often, but you want to speak a little bit about why that, how you can have an increase at times?
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a budget that, that we're trying to project our expenditures, and you want to be conservative in your projections, uh, so you don't want to underestimate, uh, what you'll be spending, and sometimes due to, for instance, some increases in state funding that we didn't anticipate. Uh, one thing that we just found out, uh, a few weeks ago, that we weren't necessarily anticipating was the fact that our funded ADM for next year will be going up. So, we'll be getting about $250,000 more from the state, um, because our projected funded ADM is going up. So, that's where most of that increase is going to come from, we'll be able to spend some more state money than we typically would, and not have to spend quite as much, uh, filling in the gaps with our local funding.
And that's what I wanted you to touch on, thank you for that. The other, the other reality though on funded ADM is there's always a year lag time on that, so you have to be careful, because that increase may or may not be the same year to year, and sometimes there can be a decrease, so that's just, just, uh, just an awareness piece, thank you.
Right, and keep in mind too, that, that we're, we're just now getting to a point where we need to be with our local current expense fund balance, and, and being safe for emergencies and, and things like that. If, if, um, you know, if something like this might occur again, you know, we, we could be in some serious trouble, and that's why we need a fund balance, uh, to operate, to pay bills.
And remind us, Norris, uh, how, how this reflects what we need through the summer?
How, I'm, I'm sorry, say that again, I didn't quite catch that.
How the fund balance reflects what we need to pay in, like payroll amounts?
Right, we, we, we have funding that, we have folks that need to be paid in the summer. Um, we have, uh, projects, capital outlay projects that need to be done in the, in the summer, so uh, we would need capital outlay fund balance. Uh, sometimes we have to cover, uh, state expenditures until we get a state budget. Um, you know, various different things like that.
And the federal fiscal year and the state fiscal years do not align either.
Exactly, and, and we're not allowed to pre-spend, so to speak, our federal, federal funds, so if there are some uh, federal programs that don't allow carryover, or some that we haven't carried over much money in the past, and that we, we have to cover that with our cash flow until the federal government kicks in, the federal funding kicks in October 1st. For instance, in the past, we, we, we've had a fairly healthy carryover in Title I, and in the last three years, that's dwindled down, so we don't have that carryover that we can spend in Title I, which is our largest federal program, so we have to cover that in summer.
Other questions for Norris? Okay, I have another, um, different approach, I'd like to ask the board how you feel about something. So, we are, with all that's going on, and everything's going on with the school system and, and this virtual reality that we're, we're living in, we're still required by law to submit our budget for local monies to the commissioners by May 15th. We only have one more scheduled meeting before then, which is May the 4th. So, my, we asked my question to y'all, is how you would feel about each of you having a virtual meeting with Dr. McDaris to discuss the budget. Norris has given us the budget already, I doubt it's going to change a lot, but that would give an opportunity for additional questions and comments that could be made to Dr. McDaris, so that we would be better prepared to have a vote on May the 4th for our request. So, I guess I need to hear back from all of y'all, if you feel like that would be a good way to, um, take care of budget this year.
I think that would be good.
Yes, I would, that works for me.
Yeah, that sounds good with me.
So, this will be like, uh, just two people at a time, or one person at a time, it won't be like a public meeting on it, just information from Dr. McDaris, correct?
That's correct. It's just information only, so that we can be ready to have a, a better discussion at our next meeting. I would, normally, we would have, if, if we would have had another meeting, which we unfortunately missed when this began, or we would have had a budget workshop, where we can all, and we're all going to get that.
Yeah, actually, we could set it up just like we did the trial runs on Friday.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm glad to be there, but it's fine.
So, uh, Norris, you could coordinate that, so that we get that and, and do it early enough, so that there are questions or, or you hear enough from board members to think that the budget request is going to help some, some significant change, so that if we can do what we need to do, to make, take that, if you can do that.
And, and Dr. McDaris too, just with the changes in the meeting tonight and what we're working through, might be a good idea to post again on the website that comments about the budget can be submitted, uh, to the superintendent's office, and there'll be a time at the May meeting, uh, that folks can submit comments ahead of time. We're not required by law to have a public hearing necessarily, but I think we do allow a public comment on the budget each year, so let's, let's make sure we emphasize that on the website, that folks, their comments can be read into the record like you did public record tonight. Okay, I can work with Mr. Smith, I know that he's listening in, I can work with him on this, and we can make sure that's on, uh, that information's on the website. And just to give the board a heads up, uh, this is the week before spring break, so we will still have, um, a, a good chunk of April afterwards, and so when we get back in that Monday after, um, uh, spring break, some of you may already see a, a meeting invite, uh, for that, and we can go ahead and start trying to plan it out around your schedule, try to make it as convenient for you as possible.
Well, we're all home, so.
Just true, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Barker, that brings us up to the bond update. And, um, I, I do have some things in my superintendent's update that I want to touch on, uh, that's not shown as an agenda item, so I want Norris to go ahead and give us a bond update, and then for part of my superintendent's update, if the board is okay, I will defer to, uh, Mr. Campbell to share a little bit of some updated information regarding EC, uh, information, but for now, if we can do the bond budget update, uh, Mr. Barker?
Okay, and I, uh, have a document in your board packet showing, uh, year-to-date expenditures, what our budget is for both projects in a summary. Uh, you can see that we're, we're hard into it, uh, $881,000 in spending so far in total, uh, and another couple of invoices crossing my desk, uh, this past week, so we're, we're, we're hard into it as far as that goes. Uh, Vanoy has been brought into the mix now, we've had several meetings with them, they've been on campus, on both campuses several times, uh, walking the campuses, we've got phasing options proposed for both campuses, they're, they're making some slight revisions to those at this point, some pretty exciting news. Uh, I, I feel like, um, we, we've narrowed with the help of Jason Ormsby and Scott Strickler at Rosman, and Dr. Abernethy and Mr. Galloway and Ms. Sarrells at Brevard High School, we appear to have found a way to narrow our phases from four to three phases, um, which will save us between the two schools, um, close to $4 million at both schools in escalation costs, staging costs, general conditions costs, and, and so forth, and I, I was happier about that than I've been in a long time, so, um, uh, that was, that was some good news, and, and, and basically, we are having to do a little bit of shuffling, so that's why we, we felt it was very important to bring the school administration in, uh, and, and get their blessing on it, and get their okay, and get their input on it, and they were, again, very, very, very helpful and very willing to work, uh, with us, and I might add too, not only will it save us close to $4 million, but on each of the projects, it will save us about 16 months' time. So, pretty much an entire school year at both projects, which, which is even, I can't believe I'm saying this, but even more exciting to me than saving money.
Absolutely.
So, uh, so that's one, at least one year less disruption to the students and their instruction, so that was, that was also some good news. Uh, and, um, at the next board meeting, once we get those minor changes to the phasing worked out and, and get some things nailed down, I'll bring that, uh, those phasing options, uh, to you, may ask Clark Nixon to come and, and present them to you, and let you take a look at them, and ask questions or make comments or whatever, if you'd like to do that, so, again, good, good progress on some things, and, um, uh, we will be meeting one more time with what I call the specialty teachers, such as CTE, uh, arts, uh, uh, specialty spaces, I should say, athletics and so forth, and make sure we have things nailed down, uh, the way they should be, especially CTE at Brevard High School. So, any questions about the progress, where we are today?
Any other questions? Thank you, Norris, that's extremely exciting.
Yeah, it's very good news.
Very, very good news.
That's, that's phenomenal, great, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Uh, that brings the superintendent's update, and I'm going to pause, and I will defer to, uh, Mr. Campbell to provide board with some, some information, some of it, uh, literally, I've been hot off the press, uh, involving EC services, which is a, a big topic in North Carolina. Uh, Mr. Campbell?
Very good, thank you, Dr. McDaris, and good evening again, everyone. So, board, the, the issue of special education is obviously a very tricky one. I think that, uh, it goes without saying that no district is unable to provide the full spectrum of services that are in IEPs for students with special needs, that the challenges that we're all facing are, are very acute when it comes to trying to provide services to, to children with special needs. So, it's something that your staff is keenly aware of and is focused on, it's something that the state is focused on, and frankly, it is something the federal government is trying to figure out as we speak. So, the first guidance that we got about EC students came from the federal government, and they basically said that if you are not providing educational services to regular education students because of COVID-19, there's no legal obligation to provide special education services to EC children. They said, however, if you are providing services, electronic or online services, then you should provide EC services to the greatest extent possible, and that's the language that was used in the, the federal guidance. What was unknown at that time, and is still unknown as we speak tonight, is the degree to which we will be required to provide compensatory education, if any, to students. So, take a typical situation, and I'll take a, a real-life example that happens, you know, more frequently than we'd probably like, but you've got a, a related service provider, like a speech therapist, and that person, uh, is no longer employed, leaves the district, it takes us two or three weeks to get somebody new onboard. During that two-week period, the child misses four sessions. Well, we provide compensatory education, we make up those four sessions. So, what is unknown right now is the extent to which the federal government is going to require or not require school districts to make up all of the time and services that are missed during the COVID-19 crisis, during the pandemic. In fact, Secretary DeVos, you're going to want to watch this on, on the news and, uh, keep an eye on it, but she has, U.S. Secretary of Education DeVos, has the authority to ask Congress to waive certain special education requirements, timelines, within the next 30 days. So, she's going to have to make a decision whether she asks for that in the next 30 days. So, I think your question to me and your staff would be, well, what are we doing right now then, if there's all this uncertainty out there? Well, your staff is doing literally the best they can, the, the word has gone out, and I know that your staff, that like others, is working diligently to provide the services we can provide for students electronically, either on the telephone or through other means. Uh, communications are going out to parents about what their access to the internet is, what they can access for their child at home, and what we can provide. And frankly, we're documenting, we're documenting what is being provided, we're documenting what's not being provided, uh, and your staff is doing for your EC population exactly what they're doing for the regular ed population, and that is the best they can. What the, the state issue will be is, as, uh, Mrs. showed you earlier, and Dr. McDaris has talked about, the state has come up with criteria for online education and other access to education that can be used to evaluate primary school children and grade secondary school children. So, if we intend to give grades for the, the, the last quarter or the second semester of this year, we will have to also give progress for EC students, that's one of the federal requirements unless it gets waived. So, those two issues are interrelated, the, the degree to which Transylvania County Schools decides to grade children will also impact how we report on EC children, and frankly, whether or not we have to make up possible services after this coming semester or this coming final quarter of the year. So, nothing for you to vote on tonight, obviously, I just wanted you to be updated, Dr. McDaris and I have had lots of conversations about this. In fact, I'm going to join the superintendents in a conference on Thursday morning in which we're going to talk about grading, find out what other districts are doing, and also talk about this, this issue of EC students. So, there's a lot that's unknown right now about what our legal requirement is to EC students, but rest assured that in the absence of that legal guidance, your staff is actively trying to provide what they can for those students right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Anybody have any questions?
Jeff, could you just kind of keep me up to date on what's happening on that, because, you know, I spent 35 years doing EC, and I, I'm just really worried and interested about.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Welborn, you don't, you don't want to step down from the board and jump in there again for a few months?
I tell you what, I'm too old, honey.
Well, I miss you, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always keeping us up to date on what's going on.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I will try to be brief in my superintendent's update, um,
Excuse, excuse me, Jeff, I do have a question about that. Um, how does this affect, uh, as you mentioned, Chris, a speech therapist that would go to the home and everything when we're in a quarantine or stay in there? I, how, I mean, how does that affect us, and, and just how much can we do? Maybe Alice knows, can answer this, but I'm,
I actually have an example I can give on that one. Uh, speech language, um, they've been actually doing some pretty impressive work doing teletherapy, uh, doing, using Google Meet, uh, like we are tonight, for example, um, they're engaging with some students, and, uh, Mr. Putnam, I asked him to share, have them share some pictures, and I have some pictures, uh, that don't, I don't know that I can pull them up, but it shows some students engaging with a speech language, language person using Google Meet, so that's, that's, um, probably one of the easier answers, uh, Mr. Griffin, I don't know if, uh, Chris wants to weigh in, but that one, we've been able to do some pretty exciting work with teletherapy, very proud of them on that. Very proud of them on that. Uh, so some of the other compensatory potential services that are a little bit more challenging.
Right. And we'll just have to wait and see, but that is what, uh, what everyone is doing, Mr. Griffin, is teletherapy, tele-education sessions, uh, using the, the internet connections. And even where possible, if the parent doesn't have an internet connection, they're getting on the cell phone. They're using FaceTime, they're using audio. They are very creative, but you're exactly right. In the current quarantine environment that we're in with social distancing and the health and safety of students and employees, no one is going to the home right now. Good question.
Some of the things that I wanted to share with the board, uh, very briefly, uh, just to let you know what's going on. Meals go out this week, uh, as they have, but we're also doing something a little different this week. Beginning tomorrow on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, um, staggered out so we can hit every area, remote area, uh, where we do drop-offs and have some of our points of, uh, meal pickup. We are having literally, um, some additional trucks followed, refrigeration trucks, because we will have some shelf-stable items as well as some frozen items with directions that will be going home, uh, going out with the meals so that, uh, families will have, the students will have this for next week for spring break. We will be closed down completely for spring break as we would have normally have been. Uh, ironically, the timing's probably pretty good right now with different things that we need to consider, such as social distancing, and many of our people are child nutrition workers, transportation, they're, they're, quite frankly, they're tired. And so spring break will hit at a good, good time for that, but at the same time, we don't want children to go hungry so that we will be shipping, um, a lot of different things this week. So there'll be a lot of activity. Uh, the governor did release some funding, as you know, uh, to, um, help some of the pandemic issues for school systems. These are targeted toward child nutrition areas such as transportation, remote learning and childcare. Uh, we would always like to have some additional things that we can enhance with our remote learning, but we're, we're in pretty good shape on that, uh, perhaps compared to some colleagues who have had to scramble. Um, we're targeting that toward child nutrition. Uh, basically, our portion, by the time it got to us, to help with child nutrition, including child nutrition and transportation staff who are preparing, transporting and distributing meals. We're going to be targeting some of those monies into that area to help with that. UNC TV is working with DPL on some different things involving, um, programming that will help with some of the online remote learning. Uh, thing about remote learning, we've got to remember it's blended learning. Uh, I believe Mr. Griffin alluded to this earlier, or someone did. You cannot replace the teacher in the classroom, nor would you want to. There is an art and craft in teaching, but what we can be doing and what we've always approached, um, uh, the problem, uh, in our system, uh, and the way we've approached it is to provide that teacher with the training to be able to do the online delivery and also the technology tools, uh, to help them do that. So that combination is a blend. It's very powerful. One thing that would help, and you're going to hear more about this, I feel, is the conversation's going to shift to not only including that, but also areas such as broadband. That would be a game changer. You hear that a lot, but I'm talking about real broadband accessibility and affordability all across our state, including the remote rural areas. Some schools are participating in a virtual Spirit Week activity or activities this week. Uh, we'll see how that goes. Uh, Mr. Smith helped organize that, and I'll be looking forward to seeing some of the, um, feedback from that. The Department of Public Instruction is working with, uh, North Carolina Restaurants Feeding Kids Initiative to connect various food establishments with schools and community organizations. Uh, the School Nutrition Division in partnership with No Kid Hungry and the UNC Chapel Hill Gilling School of Public Health hosted a webinar with 300 local restaurants, food management companies, community colleges, university dining programs, et cetera, other food establishments, to try to work with them with our child nutrition to try to provide additional meals for coverage. Over the past three weeks, schools and community organizations have served over 7 million meals to students across the state of North Carolina. But we do have some challenges in food supply that we're, uh, watching, and, um, this will help with school nutrition programs to partner with community organizations that are allowed to contract to help supply food. So that was good news. Um, we also have some emergency purchasing procedures that have been, uh, made available to us that will help. The Executive Board of the North Carolina School Superintendent Association, uh, which I am on, is working with DPI and the State Board on a number of areas in response to the pandemic. These include remote learning. Jeff Booker of Gaston County, a good friend of mine, uh, and I are the two superintendents that are on this working group. We're also working with the Friday Institute and the North Carolina Virtual Public School. Uh, it's been a good conversation so far, good meetings. I'll have an update, uh, tomorrow that I'll provide to the association, but we're also making sure that we're addressing some of the things such as preparation, including even on the, uh, colleges, universities, the teacher preparation, because as Ms. Welborn has alluded to, it's not easy to do it well, and it takes a lot of engagement. There's an art and craft to teaching, and this just highlights that. And also, we want to not forget social emotional aspects of this as students are out there many times with maybe not the best connection in the world, et cetera. There are a number of work groups. Um, I am on the remote learning, but we have things related to seniors, graduations, successes, communication, school calendar, professional development, on and on. So those are a lot of the different things that are going on. I have been on a number of conference calls, averaging around six to seven a week as we try to work together in a state to try to pull together and to cover, um, as much as we possibly can for normal school operation in a virtual world. That is my superintendent's update. I want to thank everyone who has been working very diligently, uh, our office professionals. Yeah, we, we are, we feel we are the center of the community, and I think, um, this pandemic has highlighted that, and we'll continue to do everything we can because we know learning never stops. Appreciate the board's support on this. I'm sorry we had a little glitch on the, um, board meeting online tonight. We, we went specifically just to the TCS NC domain. We didn't catch that, and I apologize for that. But we'll put this online and we'll be ready and better for the next one. And that is my board update for tonight.
Can I ask a question that I meant to ask?
Absolutely.
So as of right now, um, we have no budget shortcuts in the local budget.
We do not. Everything that, everything was budgeted. So we are meeting the budget. Um, where we received some extra help is on the child nutrition side. We are, uh, the state is allowing us to, uh, apply for per-plate reimbursement at the summer rate, feeding rate, which is higher than the normal school year rate. That's helping. We've also had some wonderful donations from, uh, community partners, and the governor's, um, uh, release of some funds will also help us with some of our child nutrition workers and transportation workers who are working a, a lot of hours feverishly, uh, to cover some things. So we'll be able to do some, uh, basically some COVID-19 payment, uh, options that will help us cover child nutrition issues. And so that all, um, all together means that, um, I think we're in pretty good shape, and, uh, we, we believe everything that we needed budgeted is budgeted right now under our current budget conditions. And everyone's being paid too.
Yeah.
Important dates?
Important dates. When we get to those, um, some of our dates have changed. We would have had the Teacher of the Year Awards Reception and the Kindergarten Just Read and Just Rally this week, as well as the All County Course. Uh, Teacher of the Year and All County Course would have been tomorrow. Those have been canceled. We do have a teacher workday on April 10th. However, we will have some remote learning options on that date for the teachers who are also very tired, and, uh, they, they could, they could use a workday, um, to just catch up on a few things that, that I know that they're working on. Spring break next week. The next regularly scheduled meeting is May 4th. The Taste of Transylvania has been canceled. Be looking for some options for people to be able to do some things to help with that. Very important, uh, fundraising effort. And the Scholars Recognition Meeting on May 21st has been canceled. Uh, we're looking at some possible options there. Just, it's just a tough time. Um, right now, the last People Day is still scheduled for June 4th. Um, I dare say that we may be looking at some different types of graduation options, uh, because the Gordon Music Center, of course, their season has been, uh, impacted by this as well. So we will adjust accordingly. Um, right now, we're scheduled to go back to school on May 18th. Um, I don't know that that will occur, but we will plan accordingly either way. And that's really, we'll get into June, and that's really, um, not much of a upcoming dates list, but that's what we have for now.
Normally, our budget calls for another time of public comment, which we're not required to do and we're unable to do this time in the meeting, so we'll just go over that, uh, which will bring us to other items. And I do want to give, um, all board members a chance to, to speak during this time, but before we do that, one last item we had in, I wanted for the board to vote on was a resolution of appreciation. Since we have had this glitch in our, um, on streaming tonight, we're not going to vote on it, but I am going to ask for your nod of approval. I'm going to read it and ask for your nod of approval, and we will do our official voting on resolution at our next meeting. So if I could just do that first, and then I'll open the door for some other comments. Transylvania County Board of Education Resolution of Appreciation. Whereas the teacher, instructional support staff, district operational support staff and administrators help our county prepare our nature, nations, future citizens and leaders through guidance and education. And whereas the combined staff of the Transylvania County Schools encounter students of widely different backgrounds. And whereas our system works daily to nurture, feed, love and support, protect and educate our children. And whereas Transylvania County Schools is the center of our great community of Transylvania County. And whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students. And whereas Transylvania County Schools' educational family spends countless hours preparing educational activities, lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching, and protecting and performing community service for students and the community. And whereas the Transylvania County Board of Education recognizes and supports our educational family of teachers, instructional support staff, district operational support staff and administrators in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Transylvania County Board of Education reclaims its deep appreciation and thanks to the entire Transylvania County Schools' educational family. And if it is further resolved that the Transylvania County Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join in personally expressing appreciation to all staff members of the Transylvania County Schools for their dedication and devotion to their work. Uh, just, we'll have to vote on that in our next meeting, but.
That's great, Bonnie.
Yeah, sounds good. I like it.
Good. Yeah.
I know it'll mean a lot to the staff. I mean, I know how hard they work, because I've got, you folks know, I got $2. I've seen how hard they've worked in this field. We got special people. We really do.
So thank you for that. We'll, we'll vote on that in our next meeting, but we can. We just want to say thank you. But before I say anymore, I want to, uh, give everybody an opportunity to, to speak, to, to express your appreciation and acceptance if there's anything you would like to add to the meeting.
Jeff, is, are any of our people sick? Has anybody gotten sick?
Uh, we have a number of people who are, are not feeling well. To our knowledge, it's a combination of things. Uh, we know that some, it seems to be seasonal allergies. We have to remember there's still a little bit of flu going around. Uh, we're, we're, you know, take every situation seriously. We have some people that have self-quarantined. Um, we also, uh, right now, this lovely warmer weather that we have has brought out the very best in the pollen, and we're really struggling with that, quite frankly. So, um, we do have some people, to our knowledge, we do not have anyone who, who has been diagnosed with the coronavirus, to our knowledge. But I do want to use that as an opportunity to, to thank Elaine and all her folks at Health Department. They're, they, they've always been a great part with our school system as well, and, and she keeps us all up to date on different things. But, uh, yeah, we do have some seasonal illness, but to our knowledge, none of it is coronavirus-related to our knowledge.
Okay. Thank you. I've just been real worried about the people who are handing out.
We have, uh, we, you know, we have, uh, people, cafeteria workers who are distributing food, wearing masks and bus drivers and things such as that. And, um, so we're trying to, to work the, the, when they're preparing food in the kitchens, they are exempt from, uh, certain situations. We know that, but we still want to keep everyone as safe as possible.
Yeah. I mean, I think I'm really aware that we have people who are out there meeting children and meeting families and carrying food to people while I'm safe at home. You know, we have folks who are out there doing what needs to be done, and I just really appreciate them. And let us know if anybody falls.
Sure will. Absolutely.
I do want to, um, and I would have been very grateful for all the work that the teachers have done over the last couple of weeks and have really stepped up. And I know Linners Teacher, um, at Rosman Elementary has sent a lot of emails, and she has been working so hard, um, along with all the other staff. But I do want to give a, um, I do want to recognize the parents right now too, who are working full-time at home and trying to address to these new schedules. Um, hang in there, because it is, it is difficult work. Um, I'm trying to work with a, a three-year-old and a high school grader. Um, and I'll, I'll admit, you know, Blizzard Bay or the virtual days have been, uh, they've been difficult. Um, trying to make sure that my child is kept on track. So, um, all of the parents, grandparents, everybody else, all the guardians that are helping out, we very much appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
Absolutely.
You hang in, you hang in there, Courtney.
We're trying.
Yes, my son and his wife are going through the same situation in Lexington, Kentucky, trying to, to keep up the professorial duties at UK while having a third grader and a fifth grader at home, uh, and continuing their, uh, learning. And it's, uh, as my son says, it is, yes, it is challenging.
And the parents who are also teachers, I just can't imagine trying to keep virtually and also working on your own children's virtual days. So, um, hats off to you guys too. It's, uh, it's hard.
The one, the one thing I want to mention, and we've not really said a lot about this tonight, it's not just us here in the county or the, or the country. We're talking about the whole world going through a situation that we've really not seen since 1918 as far as the illness and the death. And I can't tell everybody, everything seems little to me compared to what we're going through now. So just, you know, it's, it's, it's just scary, and I just appreciate, I appreciate everything, everybody, not just here, but in the world's going. I saw today on the news how we're getting supplies from other countries. Uh, China flew something in, and, you know, they're supposed to be one of our real enemies. Uh, this is a completely different world we're living in.
I know we've expressed several times tonight our appreciation to our, our staff, uh, and students and parents, but I think I want to reinforce that and.
and parents, but I think I want to reinforce that, and as well to those community partners that are stepping up and helping. I mean, you know, there was a saying a number of years ago, and it's still, it's even more applicable today, takes a whole village to raise a child. And falling back on an old Transylvania County school slogan, it is the kids that count.
Do we have DSS workers who are helping ride the buses?
I do not, no, I don't think so. Not, not every day, no, I do not believe so. I'll double check on that, but I'm not aware of any.
And I would just add my appreciation to what y'all already said, everyone that's stepped up. I know people in this building, the central office staff are working. I think one day, I think I worked harder today than I do with schools and regular sessions, but I know it's a, it's a new and challenging world. I did have an opportunity to take part in a survey, a segment survey from the School Board Association of different things, and some of the things were what some of your challenges, and, but one of the first questions was, how were you doing with providing devices? And I was very glad to be able to say that wasn't really a problem for us, have other challenges and other things, but we were able to take care of that well, and I was proud of that. And so, I was also glad to care about community support that we have in our county. And so, so there's always one for each, and in the midst of a lot of trouble. I just, and I want to say, along with the lines of what Ron just said, we talk so much about how that we are a county of community schools, and there is no doubt that our community has embraced our schools and our students, and thankful for that, and for everyone that's taken an opportunity to work through this, and would encourage all of those, anyone listening, our teachers, our students, our staff, parents, grandparents, whoever you are, to continue to follow the guidelines that have been set for us, the play at home, and the social distancing, and all those things that we're supposed to do so that we can get through this time as quickly as possible, to get back to the world that we prefer, where we can see our role and our students. Anything else?
I'm going to adjourn.
Everybody be safe, be well.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Whoop, that's a vote.
And have a great evening. Thank you.
Good night.